Call the Ashland School Board regular meeting order Tuesday, September 5th. First item is Pledge of Allegiance and Flight of Allegiance. And Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Member Lo Paul, Steve is here, he's up here, Ray's here, Glenn's here, and Sandra is absent with notice. On our agenda presentation, we skipped that, there's no presentation for tonight. And the first item is minutes. I think everybody was handed a corrected version of the minutes.
I can share with you that the change is on the second page, Section D, under Financial Report. What was added was after the semi-colon, "and" to use 60,000 of the general funds to pay the balance of the roof work.
That was a full motion.
In addition, the non-public minutes are included in this packet as well. It was only one non-public item.
Anybody see any corrections or changes that were necessary?
I just have one thing. The first paragraph, first real paragraph, Mr. Dianne opened the public hearing at 6:312.
Yeah.
Pick one.
Atomic clock.
Sounds like a flea.
That was good. Isn't anything else? I think I motioned.
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion, all in favor? 4-0. Thank you. Here, those are the floor, number one, agenda items only. Is there anything from the floor? Seeing none from our two guests. We'll move on. Communications, budget timeline. Trish?
Thank you. Included in the packet are the first drafts of the budget development timelines on the district budget process. The dates are based on last year's schedules and are certainly open for discussion and change. The SAU meeting has not been set as of yet in December. And on the district budget process page, the current board should include Mr. Heath, who will be up for election in 2018, and there he will be the only board member up for election. So it will be one board member, and Mr. Heath will be added.
Make sure there aren't any meetings, or especially see if you have anything, training or anything that needs to be done. And just come back for next. Thanks, Mo.
Certainly. Thank you.
Thank you. DOE 25.
I think under communications, we also just had the New Hampshire School Boards Association did include, just in your packets, some communication from the New Hampshire School Boards, some various conferences they have coming up, some trainings. They have a new staff attorney, and they had some legislative updates as well for the board. And I think Trish had one more thing regarding the trustees of the trust.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we received communication from the trustee of the trust fund, Mr. Peters, and he wanted backup for the withdrawal from the expendable trust, as well as a formal letter requesting the withdrawal, signed by a majority of the school board members, so I have that for your signature tonight, as well as the backup if you'd like to review.
I don't think that's anything we have to vote on, because we're already voting on it, just a formality, on the request, and require a quorum of signatures, and I'll go release the money.
I'll pass that around when the manifests come around.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. That's it on those two?
Yes.
Administrative reports, enrollment and principals' reports.
So I can start with enrollment and tell you that the report that you have in front of you is off by one. We have gained another third grade student, so we have 159 in house right now. I'm going to share with you a few little tidbits about what's been happening in the start of the school year. So this year, the staff got together, as we do every year, and we looked to kind of come up with a theme that addresses our goals for the kids and their learning, their habits and kind of attributes that we want them to have in the learning process. So we, some of the teachers read the book Teach Like a Pirate, I mentioned this to you guys earlier, they read that for their summer reading, and so kind of going off that same theme, we really decided that we could work that same acronym in for the students. So we, our goal for the year, our theme is Learn Like a Pirate. So those are the scat habit, ah, sorry, those are the habits and dispositions that we want our kids to have this year in their learning process. We've kind of threaded this throughout the school. We have a theme committee that's going to work together to make this a big part of everything we do. So far, we've had some great ideas and some really neat ways that we've kind of woven this in, so I'm really looking forward to see that this will be probably the first theme that we can really incorporate in every aspect of what we do here. So it's been really exciting. The younger teams, the younger classrooms have come up with their own words that are more age-appropriate for those kids, but all basically about the same kind of skills and disposition. So look forward to seeing a lot of pirate-themed things going on at the school this year. And if you want, again, if you want to read that book, we have the copies, we have a couple copies if you'd like to borrow them, and we also, there's the student version, Learn Like a Pirate, which fits perfectly as well. So we're thinking about maybe, if we get a chance, and we can think that it's appropriate for our middle-level students, that maybe we will get that and have that be a required reading for them. So, just wanted to show you a few things that we did in the teacher workshop days. Those three days are so valuable, but always so incredibly busy. We have some required things that we need to do, we have classroom time, we have team meetings, we have updates in 504s, IEP, student medical needs, we do some trainings, we do a CPT refresher, and that's for restraints, for students that need safe restraints. We talk about the theme, we did the book club discussions, we do the master calendar. This year, we talked about fundraising. Our safety drill schedule is put out there, we build all of our kind of 30, 60, 90-day plans, and those are those action-driven plans for each classroom, for each team, to come together and kind of decide, not just academically, but behaviorally, socially, emotionally, what do we want to work toward. We start at the 90-day mark and work backwards, and kind of build the first half of the year that way. And we revisit those regularly throughout the year, and revise them, update them, and write new ones when we've met the goals of those plans. We also plan middle-tier orientation, which is a pretty hefty undertaking, and already started the process of planning open house two weeks ago, so that's coming right up. So that's just a fun way to kind of look at all the things that are happening here in the three very busy days. We also take the time to do a team-building activity every year. It's, I try to do something different every single time. This was a complete mystery. I told teachers the day before, I just gave them the address in Meredith of a place that we were going, and told them they had to be there at 7:45. It's actually a new place called Crack the Code New Hampshire in Meredith, and it's a team-building activity where they put you in an escape room that has a theme, and you have to go through the room and work in teams, and solve these kind of puzzles and riddles to escape from the room. And it happened to be Escape from Blackbeard's Cabin, when we went, so it kind of worked right in with the pirate theme. But we had two different teams going, and when one team was in the escape room, the other team was doing a lot of team-building activities with the help of the guides from the Crack the Code, and they were fantastic. We really had, I think, a really great day. It was very positive, and, you know, we got to know each other in a different way, the groups were mixed up pretty well, and we had the new staff there too, so it was a great opportunity for us to kind of get to know people, and for them to get to know us, our new staff members. Updates for the year, I just gave you the enrollment report. For my staff, the budgets are due on September 11th. Our September Staff of the Month, Lester Brent and Liz Coleman. As you know, Lester did a ton of work this summer in planning for the new leased equipment, packing up the old leased equipment, we've moved things out of the computer lab, he's setting up all the devices, we are not doing any bring-your-own devices this year, we're using just the leased iPads that we have, which is fantastic. So he has done so much work to try to get all of those layers working together and ready for the kids to come. He set up some newer systems in the Epiphany Program, achieved 3,000 Smarty Ants, I mean, he's just been right out straight. So we are incredibly fortunate to have Lester here, and his capacity to manage all those things, and work with teachers, and have patience, and training us over and over again on these systems and programs, because for many of us, it's just a completely new kind of tool to use. He's just amazing, so we're very fortunate to have Lester. Liz Coleman, our second-year special education teacher here at Ashland. Over the past month, she's really, her leadership qualities have really shined. It's been great to see her do that. We've got, had, you know, 26 students kind of rolled over this year, out the door, 26 out and about 26 in. Many of them special needs students that are significantly different from the ones that we have had in the past, so staff had to do a lot of work to kind of prepare very quickly for some of these students. And Liz did a great job of kind of taking that all in, and stepping up, and putting things in place that she knew she could get in place, and working with the rest of the team. So really thankful to have Liz, and have her be a part of our team, and feel like she has a voice, and that she can be a leader. So that's been really a great thing to see. We have three new shipmates this year. We have Sarah Yulman, she is the co-captain of Team Integrity. Kendall Lou is our new maestro and our middle-tier advisor, and Tim, the new guy of pocket, he signed his email like that, I didn't come up with that. Master pirate ship assembler, the day, the first day of school, Tim and I were out there at 5:00 in the morning, putting together the pirate ship, that was fun. And he's our new maintenance manager, and he's just done a great job stepping in, following the lead of Gary Hamm, and being very proactive, and working with staff, helping teachers, but also working right alongside Heidi and Morgan Niles, and making sure they have what they need, and letting them lead him and show him what he needs to know. We're super thankful to have Tim, he's been great. Ken and Sarah also jumped right in and had to blaze their own trails right away, so I'm really excited to see the things that we see at the concert, at our first concert, and the things that Sarah Yulman is doing with her team partner, Brian Jones. They're a pretty powerful team, so I expect great things from them this year. Hopefully, you've seen the new playground equipment that has been installed. We had huge thanks to Mike Lewis and Alan Merrifield, who came over two different days and brought equipment and cement, and put together that gigantic piece of playground equipment. Much more complicated than I think any of us thought when we first opened the package and took out the instructions. I think people wanted to cry, but they stepped in and took their time to do that for us and our kids, and it's just beautiful. And the kids were so excited when they saw it. So it was a long time coming. Student Council did a great job writing the grant originally, with Teresa Merrifield and Jamie King's help as their advisors, so we finally got that in place, and the kids were very excited for that. So if you have a chance, and it's not raining, and you want to take a look, please feel free to go out back and see it. It's just a great, great addition to our playground, and hopefully the start of more opportunities to get some newer playground equipment out there. Also want to thank everyone that was a part of the process of all of the great building projects we had going on over the summer that were successfully completed well in advance of the school year. We had, the playground entrance was completely redone, the main entrance was redone, we replaced doors, got rid of a lot of the glass for safety purposes, the floors were redone, they just did a fantastic job. We have the new lights in the gym put in, and we had a fan and a
Dampers.
Damper system put in to help circulate the air in the gym, which has been great. The lights in the gym now have dimmer, a dimmer switch, so that when we have concerts and things like that, we can dim the rest of the lights, so that the light is just shining on the performers, which hopefully will help with kind of the busy noise that goes on during the shows. So we're really excited about that. And we also got a new steam table for the kitchen, which we needed, so that's been great. Diane Hill's really excited about that, and it's working out great. We also put save, new locks on all the doors that allow them to lock appropriately from the inside in a much easier way than we had dealt with in the past, so that's a big safety update that we're really happy to have in place. So that all comes from the work of the Safety Committee and the Facilities Committee all working together and planning that, so I'm very appreciative of that, because that's really important. So thank you. The first day of school, we had the pirate ship set up, and we had a whole box of props, and we got a lot of great pictures of the kids. It's always neat to see their faces on the first day, they're very excited, but to kind of have an added benefit of having them, you know, step in and have some pictures taken, and put on some goofy, you know, hats and things like that with the other kids was really great. So we always try to do something fun and special when they walk in the first day, so that they feel the excitement of the school year starting, and this was a great way to begin.
I'd like to just interject, I was here the opening day, and a parent made a point of coming up to just say how nice it was, that things were made extra special, that, you know, it was a nice way to get the kids excited for the first day, and made it extra special for the parents to take that first day of school picture, too.
It was really great.
So kudos to Mrs. Bartlett and folks for getting that up and running.
We also did, within the first few days, we had the Cliff Grant Year of the Book kickoff event. So Cliff, the people from Cliff came in, and they had books for all the kids, the kids get to take them home and keep them forever and ever, they were so excited about that. They did book talks, they looked at all different books, it was, it was just an amazing event. So Joanne Bickford, who wrote that grant originally for us, our librarian and speech assistant, has gone through such great lengths to plan these things and make sure with her committee that we have all these great events happening all year. So this was the kickoff event, there'll be many more things that we're involving parents in, some night things, really the idea is to connect and empower kids to want to read, and to be excited about reading, and to have access to as many great books as we can get to them. We're also working with the Ashland Library as well, to make more events happen, and to be connected in that way with them, and to work with them. So this is a really exciting thing, this grant has been amazing, and I know all year we're going to get a huge benefit from that, and kind of, again, generating that excitement around reading, and learning beyond just the scope of the school day. Middle-tier orientation went really well, we have, I brought a couple copies of our kind of program of studies for the first trimester, if you wanted to take a look at that. Students have, I think it's probably close to or over 40 different options when they're choosing their schedule. So we did the scheduling process with them, and then they go through a lot of different sessions about, you know, appropriate use of technology, care of the devices, the handbook, the behavior expectations, homework expectations, learner recovery plans. We take them through different sessions, teamwork, team-building sessions, over those four days, or three days, actually, and then they go on that fourth day on a trip that they don't know anything about until the day before, we're big on those big surprises here. And they went to Portsmouth, and they did an amazing race. Half of the students go on the gondolo, and they do, as you can see, they're steering the boat, you can see the sail, they do a bunch of science experiments while they're out there, while the other goes in their learning advisories all over Portsmouth in kind of a scavenger hunt, and then at the midway point of the day, they switch. And they all come back at about, they were here around 5:15, had a little bit of trouble with one of the buses that didn't start for the way back, so they all took crowd on one, which was not fun. But they had just an incredible day. So their last part of this for them is each advisory creates a video that kind of captures their experience. So that they will be putting together over the next few weeks, and we'll put those out wherever we can so that people can see them, because they always come out really great. So that's one of the big things that we do with the middle-school kids, to kind of bond them with their learning advisors, with each other, teamwork, and some problem-solving skills as well. So that was a really great day for our middle-school team. And the last thing I just want to talk to you about is we have open house Thursday night from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. We're going to offer, everyone enters through the cafeteria, we have different tables set up that, where we offer opportunities for local groups to come in and have kind of a little interactive display, so that they can maybe entice some families to be a part and participate in this. We have Girl Scouts coming, Ashland Parking Rack, the banking program through Meredith Village, we do Box Tops for Education, Hannaford's Helps Program, and we'll even have a display about the Cliff Grant. We are also setting up volunteer fingerprinting in the cafeteria, which we did last year, which was a really successful way to kind of get that done for parents. And then there are sessions set up, little 15-minute sessions throughout the school happening at different times, so that parents can visit classrooms at their leisure, or they can go in and be a part of kind of a greater discussion with those teacher, led by the teachers, talking about those things you see on the slide there, homework guidelines, attendance and behavior expectations, access to online adaptive programs, things like that. We'll also have our pirate ship set up for a selfie station, and we will also be taking the little, remember the Polaroid pictures that, you had to shake them, yeah, we have the newer version of that, so that we can give them a little keepsake. And the middle tiers, the grade-level advisories, will be having parent meetings to talk about fundraising throughout the year, and all of their goals leading toward that eighth-grade trip. So we'll have a more complete schedule available online on our website, but we also will have lots of handouts for people to take information with them, because it tends to be a really exciting but very fast-paced evening, so we try to give them as much as we can to take home, so they, when they have time to take a breath, they can take a look back at kind of the information, and process it a little more after the fact. So that's it. That is our first week in a nutshell. Any questions or anything? Do you want to talk about this that you sent me?
Oh, yes. So I brought, I brought the original, Saturday, yeah, and so this is not mine, this is actually the Ashland Library's copy, but I'm going to try to get back, back issues. This is the August 2017 issue of the New Hampshire Magazine. I was sitting crunching through my cereal the other morning, and I came across a little section, excuse me, behind the scenes at New Hampshire Magazine, "The future of magazines is in good hands," and it has a picture of the Warrior publication that the students put together during Project Week. Yeah, and it's a, it's a short piece, but it's very, very nice, nicely written, so it's great. Pass it around, and I'll see if I can get a couple copies.
I'm going to see if I can get them, too. We're actually going, I'm taking some middle-school students that represent each of Project Week groups on October 18th to meet with Ashland Women's Club. They invite us for lunch, but it's much later after middle-school lunch, not that they won't eat again, but we're going to go and talk to them about Project Week and share, because they made a donation directly to the school for that, they were like, "Use it for whatever you want." So it's awesome to be able to have that opportunity to go speak to them and share kind of what the kids did last year, so.
Yeah, and my daughter was in that group, and she loved it, and raved about the trip to New Hampshire Magazine, and just thought it was a great experience. It was great.
Thank you, Sha.
Less stimulating.
Just as right.
But just what?
Just as riveting.
I did hand out a memo and the summary fiscal year-end report for June 30th, 2017. As you may remember, this time of year, we are required to complete the Department of Education Form 25, which is a very long document. It is 25 pages long, and I'm happy to share this with anyone who would like a copy of it, we'll be signing them all this evening. But what I try to do is condense that down into something that's much more user-friendly to read, and that is the year-end summary report that I share with you and with the Budget Committee. I have not heard from the Budget Committee yet as to when they would like me to present that, but I'm sure David will let me know when.
Well, actually, we have to remove him next year.
Oh, okay. Okay. Are there any questions on the memo that I handed out before I go through the summary? Memo generally just, it gives you a complete breakdown of the different sections of the DOE 25 and the MS 25. The DOE 25 is, must be submitted by September 1st to the Department of Education, it has been, is submitted electronically, and then after your signatures, we send the hard copies. And the MS 25 is submitted to the Department of Revenue. So I will try to be quick. Page one is an overview of the year, we've had a very good financial year, although it started out to be quite challenging. The first section of the school roof was replaced for $120,000.
That's okay, this is fine with you.
We had established, the board had established, the School Safety, Securities, and Facilities Maintenance Trust Fund, which was, helped partially fund that project. We were able to encumber $87,300 to help cover the costs for the 1718 year for the facilities projects, such as the replacement of the main entryway, the playground entrance way, the things that Shannon spoke to. We were also able to return a fund balance of $86,753 to offset the amount needed to be raised for taxation for the 1718 year. That was quite a bit larger than the $30,000 that we had promised during the budget process. We also retained $30,000 to help offset the tax rate for the subsequent school year, which would be 1819. The general fund revenues were greater than we anticipated, primarily due to an increase in Medicaid reimbursements, and some unanticipated special education foster tuition from another school district. The general fund had areas of savings, as well as some areas of over expenditures. We had changes in personnel related to change in assignment, and greater than anticipated Title I funds. Those things provided significant savings within regular education, salaries and benefits, and special education. We did have over expenditures in special ed transportation and homeless transportation, but we did also have some offsetting savings in physical therapy, OT therapy, electricity, and fuel oil. We had a very nice year with Cafe Services as our food service provider. The general fund contributes $20,000 toward the cost of the program, and this year, we ended the year with revenues greater than expenditures of $1,800. It was much better than last year, where we had a slight deficit. We have a fund balance in food service of $8,500, which is nice to have, in case a major piece of equipment fails, then we have money to replace it. If I'm going too quickly, or if you have questions, please stop me, otherwise I'll just go through quickly the rest of it. So the first, page two is the change in fund position, and it shows where we started, fund balance at the beginning of the year, our revenues, our total expenditures, what was reserved for encumbrances, and that includes open purchase orders beyond the board-voted encumbrances, the retained fund balance, and then the amount that is going back to offset the amount used, to offset the amount of money raised by taxation. Page three is more specific detail on revenue. You can see Medicaid is where we received more than we had anticipated, as well as Under miscellaneous money, we had more than we anticipated, most of, the majority of that was for gym rental, and some iPad rentals, and then some Most of, the majority of that was for gym rental and some iPad rentals, and then some flexible spending account forfeitures. Page four is a summary of expenditures, and you can see that regular ed had the highest amount of unexpended balance. That was primarily due to changes in staffing. Page five gives an overview of health insurance and dental insurance premiums that we budget, and what was actually spent, and the difference. So we were a lot closer this year in health insurance than we have been in prior years. Page six is the actual expenditures for special education programs and services. This is required in the annual report that is produced each year, but I also include it in the summary year-end report. You can see the changes in total expenditures and revenues for special education. Part of state adequacy is a portion to special education. Page seven are the board-approved encumbrances, that we spoke of earlier. Page eight is the food service fund. You can see that comparing the years 15, 16 to 16, 17, the, the food service folks base their counts as of enrollment on October 31st. I'm not sure why they picked that date, it's a different date than all the other state reports and enrollment numbers, but they choose October 31st, and you can see that we had a 10% increase in enrollment comparing the years side by side, but a slightly less percentage of free and reduced students. Page nine is an overview of federal funds. Those are the entitlement grants, which include Title I, Title II, REAP, which is Rural Education Achievement Program, and the Special Education IDEA grants. You can see we received a total of $154,741 for the 16-17 year, and then how those monies Page 10 are the special revenue funds that we have for charitable donations and community grants. It includes the Orton Music Fund and the Fitness Trail Fund. And we listed out the expenditures for the Orton Music Fund. There were no expenditures towards the Fitness Trail. And page 11 is a breakdown of the expendable trust funds through the years, and you can see that after the withdrawal of the $60,000 for the school safety and security for the roof and facilities maintenance, we still have $95,700 in that account, which will help as we want to do the next section of the roof. The board does plan on using, or had discussed using, part of the health insurance reserve to offset the cost of premiums for this year. Unlike the special education and the facilities trust, the health insurance reserve is not held by the trustees of the trust fund. That is held by the school board, and it is in the New Hampshire Public Deposit Investment Pool. And you can see that that had quite a bit more in interest this past year as they changed their investment advisor, and did much better than the, the other two accounts are with the trustees of the trust funds, and those are in Meredith Village Savings Bank. And I know that was a very quick summary, and I'm happy to go into more detail, and for anyone who would like the original report, we did include it last year for you to have a look at, so you could see the complexities of the report, and I'm happy to share that with you as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I do need a, the DOE 25 to be approved and then signed by.
So we need a motion to approve the DOE 25 for the 2016-2017 school year. Renee? And a second?
One second.
Any other questions or comments on it? If not, all in favor? Four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Page seven is business of the board, Tri-County Community Action Property deed request.
So you have in your packet an email that was sent from Tri-County Community Action Program, and you also have in your packet, attachment seven is the original deed, a purchase and sales agreement that included deed restrictions in it. The leadership for the Tri-County CAP has asked that they have an opportunity to put their best foot forward for their request, and they would like to do that at the October meeting. And I felt that that maybe tonight could be more informational for the board, for new board members to at least get a copy of what the original restrictions were, and to also have a sense of the requests that they would be bringing forth on the October meeting.
They came before us three years ago, maybe?
I think that's what we got.
Maybe three years ago, and asked the same thing. They have a different CEO, a different management company, or personnel, and they're requesting they come and basically are gonna ask for us to change the deed restrictions so that they could sell the building to maybe a bigger audience. I know I've already been through it once, Renee's been through it once. I think Renee and I are, I have no interest in changing them. I mean, they could come and speak to us, but I don't have any interest in changing the deed restrictions. And I also feel that the voters voted on it with the restrictions in place, and I don't think it would be up to us to just change the deed restrictions, and I think if anything would be a warrant article, it would be required, you know? I don't think the voters admit it, but just because they made a bad purchase, it's not our job to bail them out. I don't know, Renee? You think so?
Yeah, I'm, I'm the same here. My feelings haven't changed since three years ago, but if they can come talk to us again.
So you need Shannon and I to get a plan on this.
And they will, they are planning on being at the next board meeting.
Thank you. Business superintendent, general operating expenses, first.
Thank you. In addition to the manifest that was in your packet, I have an additional small manifest from tonight of $280. What happened was an employee closed a savings account without notifying our office. So during the first payroll, a direct deposit was made, or was attempted to be made to that savings account. She, she realized her, her error, and she notified us after payroll, but I didn't think it was, and we would like to reimburse the money now that we've received it back from that bank, and I didn't get really fair to, for this employee to have to wait for a month. So that's the only other additional manifest. If you're okay.
Anybody have any questions or, or on any of it? And I'll take a motion with manifest 20, 2004.
And 2005.
And 2005.
Thank you.
I guess I'm the most person in the room.
Yeah. Where's your interview?
I know.
Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Four zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, policies. When we were putting together this, it's a little different. Renee and I talked about, once it's got the third policy, we've looked at it enough times, so we'll put all the third readings into one motion instead of dragging them out over multiple motions. So on, on these policies, motion to approve a third and final reading of the following policies. Policy 1331, dispossession of tobacco products banned in on school facilities and grounds. Policy 1360, fundraising activities. Policy 4131, support staff professional learning. Policy 4154, substitute teachers. Policy 9111, qualifications. Policy 9111.4, removal from office. Those are all third readings for the motion to approve. Renee? Second? Yep. Are there any questions or comments on those? If not, all in favor? Four zero. Thank you. Second reading. Policy 1131, strong family and community partnership. Does anybody have any question or comments on that? If not, we'll take a motion. Renee? And a second? Yep. If nothing else, all in favor? Four zero. Motion on policy 1314, public gifts slash donations. Any questions or comments on that? If not, take a motion. Okay? Let's just change it up. Second? Renee? Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Four zero. Motion on, second, excuse me, motion on policy 5143, use of restraint and seclusion. Any questions or comments on that?
I did have a couple, not questions, comments, but a couple typo, or not typos, but on item number one, it's the third paragraph, holding a child to calm or comfort, and I believe it may be comfort, comma, encourage, comma. And then I just have one other one. On item number five, in the second sentence, forced by a child, I wondered if that should follow with student as the.
I think that's fine. That's all I had.
Policy 5143, use of restraints and seclusions as amended. Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Four zero.
Do we move in second?
Did we?
No.
Huh? You didn't?
No.
Okay? Have a motion.
But I'll move it.
Okay. And a second?
Yes.
As amendment.
Yes.
Now, all in favor? Four zero. Thank you. Policies, first reading. Policy 4114.1, physical examinations for school employees. Take a motion to approve. Renee? Second? Yep? Is there any questions or comments on it? If not, all in favor? Four zero. Motion to approve first reading policy 4144, insurance. Take a motion to approve. Renee? Second? Yep? Any questions or comments on it? If not, all in favor? Four zero. Policy, motion to approve first reading of policy 5149.1, people bullying. Take a motion to approve. Yep? Take a second? Renee? Questions or comments?
He said people bullying is the title, bullying and cyberbullying, people's safety and violent protection. I know it says that in there, but it's changed. It's changed.
Yeah.
Yeah, it said people, and that was crossed out, and now it's a big one, the title. So that's all.
Yep. So we'll get that on to it for next one.
Yes, we got that changed.
Any other, anything else? If not, all in favor? Four zero. Motion to approve first reading policy 5123, promotion? Need a motion? Yep? A second? Renee? Any questions or comments on it? If not, all in favor? Four zero. Motion to approve first reading of policy 6110, curriculum guide review. Need a motion to approve?
Same thing, guide is struck in the title.
Just curriculum review.
Come here, come here. Yep.
Motion to approve policy 6110, curriculum review. Second? Yep? Any other questions or comments on that? If not, all in favor? Four zero. Motion to approve first reading of policy 6120, instructional time schedule.
Six eight.
What's that?
That's mine, yeah.
That's mine? Is that the right title?
Yes, it is. You looked at me like you were questioning it.
Oh, yeah, that's the case. A second? Yep. It's okay. Any other questions or comments on it? If not, all in favor? Four zero. On policy 6142, we were working on a different policy at policy committee tonight, and we would like to have this voted down tonight and returned back to the policy committee because there's another policy that we think can be merged into it and clean, clean up the two policies and make the one policy work better. So I'd like to have a motion to.
Just a motion to approve, and then nobody votes for it.
Right, a motion to approve it. Yep, thank you, Renee.
I'll move it.
Second? Yep. All in favor? All opposed? Zero four, we'll send it back to policy. Thank you. Motion to approve first reading of policy 6161, service animals. Renee? Second? Yep? Any questions or comments on that policy? If not, all in favor? Four zero. Motion to approve first reading of policy 6167, section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973. Motion to approve. Renee? And a second? Yep? Any questions or comments for that policy? If not, all in favor? Four zero. Thank you. Motion to approve first reading of policy 6170, special education.
6171?
6170, yep, thank you.
No, it says 6171 on the, on the policy.
She has 71 on the policy.
There's a second for one. Oh, the second one? Did I skip?
Yes.
Oh, I did, all right, sorry. It was a small, I thought it was the last part of them.
So it is a motion for 6170.
Yes, special education. Okay.
Take a motion to approve. Steve, you start your hand up. Change it up. Whoops. A second? Perfect time.
I know.
I think I'll go like that because it was a little higher. Any other questions or comments on that? If not, all in favor? Four zero. Motion to approve first reading of policy 6171, special education, independent education evaluation. Take a motion to approve. Renee? And a second? Questions or comments? Can you see, has something? Okay. Sorry, you're looking at it. Not all in favor? Four zero. Motion to approve first reading for rescinding of policy 6172, special application, notice of right pursuant to RSA 286-C, colon, 16, dash, B. Take a motion to rescind. Renee?
It's not rescinding.
It's the first.
It does say rescinding. That should not be for rescinding.
I'm just reading orders informally.
Yeah. You're right.
So this is going to be a motion to approve first reading of policy 6177.
Correct.
We only have bottom reading for rescinding, too.
Meeting instructional needs of students, did I? Second? Yep. Any questions or comments on that one? All in favor? Four zero. Next one?
The next one should not be rescinding either.
Should not be rescinding, no. Next one has motion to approve first reading of policy 6180, copyright compliance. Motion to approve. Renee? A second? Yep. Any questions or comments on that one? All in favor? Four zero. Next one?
The next one should not be rescinding either.
Should not be rescinding, no. Next one has motion to approve first reading of policy 6180, copyright compliance. Motion to approve. Renee? A second? Yep. Any questions or comments?
Should it say, at the bottom, should it say to PRC 9517? We didn't look at that today.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
At the bottom of the policy, it says to Policy Review Committee on 9517. We didn't look at it.
It should actually be to the school board, right? For first reading.
First reading.
Should be 95.
Same with the...
Yeah.
A couple beforehand, yeah.
We'll adjust that. And we would take out the note about the New Hampshire School Board does not have a policy similar to this one. That would just be...
That's not part of the policy.
Right.
All in favor? Four zero. Motion to approve first reading, is that rescinding?
It should not be rescinding. Thank you.
Of policy 6182, character and citizenship education. Motion to approve. Yep. Second? Renee? Any other questions or comments on that one? Not all in favor? Four zero. Thank you. Policy Committee will visit. Prolegial floor number two, any items? Anything from your audience? Seeing none?
Unless you want to do an update on the special education. I mean, I can probably just, we have some items. I can imagine in addition to special education, and then we give out on the other side. I think it has to be one.
Yep.
Just for the Board's information, we will be pursuing hiring an additional special education paraeducator. We do have the funding in the budget, so we're not needing to withdraw on the trust at this stage, but we did have some needs that were unanticipated. And if you recall, in the spring, we did not need to fill one of the positions moving forward for the school year, but that has since changed. And so I know that Shannon, you're in the process of hiring that position. And we do have a long-term substitute who is assisting at least through probably the end of this month. And do you want to share who that individual is?
Her name is Jan Panagola. She is a retired middle school math teacher from Plymouth Elementary School, and she jumped right in and actually went on the field trip to Portsmouth with the kids so she could get to know them, and she's been great, so. Yeah. She's, she's really a great teacher, so I'm happy that we aren't going to have any kind of a gap for the kids. And sometimes when you have a sub, it's just really hard to kind of keep things on track for the instructional purposes, but Jan's going to prevent that, so we're very happy to have her.
So they're showing this leave for non-public on our...
Announcements, Tuesday, October 3, 2017, Ashton Policy Review Committee, I will be at 5:30. Ashton School Board Regular Meeting here in the Library at 6:30. Thursday, October 5, 2017, SAU Board Meeting, Homestead Building, Meredith, New Hampshire.
Yes, and we'll work on a time for that.
There is no need for a non-public tonight. Does anybody have anything else?
I have lots of things that need to be signed. I do apologize.
That's okay. Is there anything else for the meeting?
Do you have another thing?
What's that? So what we'll do is I'll take a motion to adjourn. A second? Renee? All in favor of adjourning? Okay?